You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's the October 19th, 2022 meeting of the La Porte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the La Porte County Commission to order for Wednesday, October 19th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mateus.
Present.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Present.
And Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Motion to approve as presented.
Madam President, I would like to add, consider, under old business, or whenever he would prefer, a consideration of conversation surrounding the Franklin Street Bridge and necessary needed repairs.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, we will add that under old business. Are there any other additions, corrections, or deletions? We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the agenda as amended?
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion to amend the agenda and accept it as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signify by saying aye. The motion is carried. Agenda has been approved. Consider approval of the October 5th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our October 5th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed. A consideration of claims, Mr. Utter?
Madam President, we have payroll for the period ending 10/7/2022 in the amount of $1,291,616.32, and operating expense claims for the same period, $3,506,516.84.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claims have been accepted. Next, we have a special presentation, a tribute honoring Ms. Kelly Daisy, who was a local businesswoman. Tony, you're here. Tony and Bailey are going to lead this part of our special tribute.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's truly my pleasure and honor to bring forward Ms. Kelly Davis, if I may.
It's Daisy, actually.
Daisy. We had a spelling error, and of course, we're going to get that corrected. If I may, I'd like to read this tribute in honor, unless Madam Chair would...
No, I just wanted to thank Ms. Daisy for coming today and for being such an important part of our business community. You know, your company really stepped up during the pandemic and helped supply PPE for manufacturing and industries all across the country, right here from La Porte County, Indiana, so that's really a credit. So, we tried to capture a little bit of your accomplishments in the tribute, so Tony, if you could read that into the record, that'd be terrific.
I sure will, and it's my pleasure. This letter of recognition to Kelly Daisy, President, Absolute Industrial Safety LLC. The mission of the La Porte County Works Program is designed to spotlight unique manufacturers with career opportunities that could benefit from the broad exposure and the benefits of the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting, and equally important, to encourage inter-county commerce. Since its launch in mid-2021, the La Porte County Works Program has continually highlighted unique businesses that range in size and longevity. Absolute Industrial Safety LLC is a locally owned women's business enterprise providing PPE equipment during the COVID-19 pandemic, and is a spotlighted business that has existed for over 25 years. The core values of their company include honesty and integrity. Absolute Industrial Safety LLC guides its customers by recommending products based on necessity, never selling a product that is merely an extra. They educate their customers to help make them sound business decisions on their individual goals. Absolute Industrial Safety LLC strives to be an asset to their customers by selling more than safety equipment and supplies. They help protect the quality of life for their customers, their employees, and families alike. It is our distinct pleasure to highlight Absolute Industrial Safety LLC, and more significantly, that Ms. Kelly Daisy be recognized for her acute business acumen, significant management capability, and demonstrative staying power in the business field wrought with challenges. Notwithstanding the heightened level of challenges brought on by the global pandemic, this letter of recognition creates awareness of her noble accomplishments, meaningful contributions in service, such as critical juncture, during such a critical juncture in American history to the La Porte County community, and that was presented this October 19th day, and we could not be more proud to be the first. Congratulations.
Ms. Daisy, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments? Feel free to put it...
It's an honor to receive this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you do and all your team does.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda, we have public comment. I would remind everyone that we try to make sure that our public comment is civil and respectful, so please feel free to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, your name and your address, and we try to keep everything around three minutes, but if you need a little more time, that's okay too. All right.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette James Raymond, and my address is 0632 West Noah Drive, La Porte, Indiana.
My name is Kevin Raymond, same address.
And we know a lot of people come to this podium to voice complaints and problems, which we have done in the past, but we are here tonight to say thank you to, I know we'll leave people out because there's so many people that were involved, but thank you to the current county commissioners and former county commissioner, Dr. Cora, Attorney Shaw Freeman, Mike Pullen, Tony Hendricks, Jay Sullivan, the county council members, Al Wallace, for everything that you did to help us find and execute a solution to our water problem in our neighborhood Meadowview Estates. The project is still in progress right now, but it is well on its way to helping lots and lots of homeowners, and we really appreciate it. We were thrilled with Woodruff's and Reeve Riley and all the work that they did for us. They were so kind, polite, courteous, quick, and we just really appreciate everybody in the county that backed us and really helped us get that solution, because it will make a huge difference in our lives. So, thank you very much.
Ma'am, you might want to add to that John Smith from USI. I went out to the subdivision, I don't remember what day it was, but we also picked up somebody who lives on Kingsbury Creek, going on both sides of what's going on. In fact, he owns several acres out there, Mike McIntyre, and he showed me where they're digging, where they're putting the line in, and then came around and he showed me where they buried a 30-inch perforated pipe. That will take a heck of a lot of water, and then where the shot-off is at the end so that we don't flood anybody downstream.
Right.
They really have done a great job, and my hat's off to John Smith, the project manager, because he's been on top of every inch of it, and he lives there, so...
Absolutely. Yes, that was our bad to forget our neighbor who lives right next to us, John Smith. So, thank you, John Smith, too, for all your hard work.
We get weekly reports from John on the project, and we understand that Woodruff has made everyone happy, they're cleaning up as they go and all of that, so your issue is a long-term issue. We've been working on it for a while, so it's good to hear the good news.
Yeah.
Like John said, we all want the same thing.
Right.
We want to take care of the water problem in Meadowview, and we don't want to give it to the people downstream.
No, we don't. Absolutely.
I think we're on it.
Awesome. Thank you all so much for coming.
You're welcome.
We're so glad we could find a solution for everybody out there. Thank you.
All right, are there any other members of the public wish to speak at this time?
Hello, my name is Sandy Keller. My address is 515 East 18th Street here in La Porte, and thank you for allowing me to present today. I am here as a representative of Homeward Bound, which is a 501(c)(3) that is providing affordable housing in La Porte County, specifically affordable rental housing. Also with me is John Vanderwagen, who is a co-founder of Homeward Bound. We have prepared a packet for a request for funding through the American Rescue Plan. I believe I understand you have received a copy. Is there anyone that I can put a copy of this in front of that you don't have with you?
We had it in our packet this evening, so we've had a chance to look at it.
I wasn't sure how that would work. I feel like I need to give this good attention to make sure you understand what we're trying to do, and really, the ability to answer questions, I'm not positive I can do that in three minutes, so you feel free to redirect me anytime if there's information that's more important to you that you know is later. Let me go ahead and just jump to page three, and what I'll be covering is everything, page four through page 10, everything else in here is really supplemental for your reference, all the pretty pictures of what we're building and constructing, and some other information about the organization. If you go ahead and turn to page four, that is our specific request, is $345,000. It is to support site development work for a co-op-based rental housing village in Michigan City, Indiana, where rents are targeted for people who are between 30% and 50% of area median income. Our expected timeframe for the use of the funds is the first half of 2023, and you will see in a bit how far along we are in that project if you haven't had a chance to look at the timeline yet. What I'll add here that allows us to keep this affordable at that price range for people is that we fund 100% of development. We are not going after dollars that finance the project or that put us into long-term debt on the project, so it allows us to keep those rents low. We are also implementing a co-op model, which means residents will be a key component in running the day-to-day, and I can absolutely elaborate on more of the co-op component at any time that you have questions about that. Let me go ahead and take you on to page five, and I'm just going to drop down to that lower half about starting on the quick summary, so that gives you an idea of what is included in this community. Twelve total homes, they are four buildings with three units each. This design is in line with the quickest zoning that allowed us to keep our project moving forward. We really had visions to do something extremely different, but we'd probably still be sitting here going through that zoning variance process today. One- and two-bedroom units, this is because of the smaller size of those using universal design features. One community building, because we want to bring together that aspect of the community feel, the ability for people to meet and work together. There'd be a lot of community open space, gardens, covered bike storage, trails and boardwalks, outdoor seating and lighting, and green infrastructure, and things like permeable paving. If you turn to page six, this gives you a timeline of our project completed. We've purchased the land. It is on Carwick Road in Michigan City, so it is just north of the Housing Authority Development on Carwick Road, across from Potawatomi Country Club Golf Course. We've completed a wetland study, the rezoning, concept design and review with the city departments. Our architecture design is complete, and our design development plan with our engineering partner is complete. In progress right now is, we're in the stage of creating that construction development plan, which is pre-permit. That will allow us to go for permitting to build and start the bidding process. We expect that to finish in the next few weeks, so we will be ready to construct or to build and construct soon. First half of 2023 is when we envision starting infrastructure development, and you know, we all have a great vision of how quick this all might go, but weather in the Midwest is absolutely a factor. We understand some of the implications of labor shortages, but we will be ready, and our desire to be funded to be ready in that timeframe is really our goal today. Ideally, construction is ready to begin quickly after that, so that we are opening with people in units in 2023. The budget, full budget for the project at the bottom is $2 million to $2.7 million. This is inclusive of money spent already by us for land and fees to get to this stage. The range in that is, you know, there's a lot of variance in construction, but some aspect of this also is whether or not we receive public or private funding, and you all know very well the difference in doing a publicly funded project and the types of requirements that are in place that can drive up the cost a little bit of the project. Stop me anytime you have questions. I'm gonna...
So, you feel comfortable that you are well on the way to seeking the large chunk of financing that you need?
I can actually cover that if you want me to jump to it, or I can, we can just cover a couple more pages, and I can talk about where we are with our funding. Page seven, let me just talk a little bit about who we're trying to meet this need for. It's not a surprise that there's a lack of affordable housing. I think everyone understands it's a nationwide crisis, and it's a crisis in La Porte County as well. The chart in the middle is to help you visualize the kind of individual that might be living in the community. So, targeting 30% to 50% income limits, which are HUD guidelines, one- and two-person households, you can see what the annual income looks like. That income might come from work, it might come from a fixed income, it might come from a pension, but we are targeting people that have an income source. If you move over to that middle set of columns, 30%, paying 30% of your income for housing is a recommended guideline for everyone, but especially folks at a lower income, so that they leave money for other things. So, you can see that the 30% of income allows them to afford rental, monthly rent at that price, and so our rental rates are expected to be between $400 and $600 a month, and so that's the sweet spot that we're seeing for individuals that we're targeting for living in this community. The next page I won't cover too much on here unless you have questions about the co-op model, but two things I want to talk about for, one is differentiation, and want to be sure that you understand the differentiation between typical kinds of affordable housing that is funded through Section 8 or supplemented through Section 8. We are accepting no funds that become a mandate or rules about how our community operates. We want to have the ability to use models that we have explored and understood that are being used elsewhere in the country, that we think are far more successful than Section 8-type voucher housing, that puts a lot of mandates in place of how individuals live. And really, one of the big aspects of this is not only empowering people to take care of their own community, but to really teach and help them learn some skills in doing that, in running a board, in running a committee, in managing, I'm going to loosely say managing their finances, because we will provide support for that. But there is an aspect of that operational component that will act as mentors and guides and teachers, and really help people develop some skills in operating their community. If you turn to page nine, it gives you a view of the development budget and our fundraising goals. And boy, is it hard to forecast construction costs these days. I'll give you just a minute to look at that. And then, when you're ready, if you turn to page 10, that's the last page in this document that I'll cover, the rest is for your reading, helps you understand our contributors and funding sources. We already have a major contribution from a foundation. We have commitments and some contributions in hand from the Board of Directors, and the remaining list of primary sources for our funding, some of those are already in progress to fill out and submit. There's timeline for grant submittals, there are grants that we have submitted. Anything in the primary source for our funding, we have not yet had dispositioned. We have had conversations over two months ago with Michigan City on American Rescue Plan dollars as well. We met with the mayor, very favorable on our project. We met with city council members, and we understand that Michigan City is just not quite ready to move projects forward, so we're not anticipating at this time that there will be action from Michigan City American Rescue Plan dollars. At least, that's where it stands today with responses that we're able to receive and understand what we might receive from that source. And with that, I believe I understand, I'm learning a ton today about Commissioners versus Council, I should just note this though, that it is your role to recommend advancement to city council, and so I thank you again for the opportunity to present this project and asking for your favorable consideration to advance our project to the city council.
Madam President, it's a great program. You really got it well underway and well thought out. We all recognize the need for affordable housing. I would make a motion that we send this on to the county council for funding with our blessing.
I do have a quick question for you before we move forward. I know you said, seemed to be very diplomatic there, that the Michigan City Council wasn't quite prepared to move any projects forward. I can definitely appreciate that. Was there any indication at all as to why they wouldn't be supportive of something like this?
They're absolutely supportive, but they need the mayor and they need the city council, and they are somewhat at odds about how they see the use of the funds.
Sure. Several other things.
Yeah, I would...
So, I'll leave it at that.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Very diplomatic.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that.
And honestly, I know no more than that.
Sure.
That is what we hear from the city council.
Sure.
The inability to advance, to put a system in place, to advance requests through. They hope to be there by early next year. We hope to not need that request and be moving on with other funding sources.
Sure. All right, I appreciate that. The rest, the ones that you list here, though, you're anticipating, I guess my question would be that if for some reason the rest of your funding sources don't come through, what is your, what would be your disposition for any funds that the county would give?
I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
So, I see here...
If our funding falls through if we only get the money that you approve?
Which hopefully that would not be the case, but...
Yeah, that's a great question.
Sure.
So, we do have cash in hand. We do have some ideas of financing that are different than bank financing, so that we may gain a longer period of time to go after funding sources, but have cash in hand to do development. Given that there are huge amounts of money available for affordable housing, we believe our primary, I'm going to say a backup plan, because we'd love to not go after IHCDAs. I know that acronym, and I just drawn a blank here. So, the federal home loan dollars and for the IHCDAs, which are primary targets for this type of an initiative.
It's Indiana Housing.
But they also, thank you, Housing Development, IHCD. Community.
Community Advancement.
Authority.
Authority, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, no, I didn't like the last one, but yeah.
It comes with some constraints that we would love to avoid. We'd honestly love to avoid, but it is, we're working with a professional organization in South Bend that could write those types of grants with their eyes closed just about. They have given us a significant proposal and what it will take for us to move that kind of a grant forward and get the favorable points on the grant awards, so we feel confident with that as a funding source. We do really believe that there is a significant amount of community support through the sources that we're working with. Horizon Cares is one grant that we have already submitted, and they have indicated, I mean, they have recommended that we request a significant amount of our funding needs. We thought about a smaller amount, so that gives us the confidence that the support is there, that the desire to invest in these types of projects. The other thing we're really trying to help organizations, funders, understand is that this is the first of many. We envision doing this and different projects like this throughout the county, and so our ability to advance this project and quickly move on to the next is really where we hope to be next year.
Very good. Sorry, I'm taking up more of a council role there, but I'm sure that's a question they will probably ask as well.
Thank you, yeah. We'll be a little more prepared for that, to those questions.
Yeah, well, I will second that, and also, I'll reach out to the mayor and some friends I have on the council up there and see if we can't have them maybe try and come back to the table and take a second look.
That would be great. We did meet with Mayor Perry, and he was extremely favorable in supporting the project. Yeah, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second to advance this request for $345,000 for affordable housing. We all, I think, support and agree with the fact that it is a huge need across La Porte County, and this would be a way to begin to address that need. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried unanimously.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, other members of the public wish to speak at this time?
Rodney McCormick, I just want to briefly say something. Rodney McCormick, Vice President of the Michigan City Housing Authority. We will be breaking ground soon as well on new affordable housing. We have, none of our units are handicap accessible, and we're going to be breaking grounds pretty soon and making a big change in Michigan City. Now that we got a new attorney and we're moving forward. Now I'm here as Rodney McCormick, the citizen. Our last meeting here, Ms. Mateus, you made it clear that I said some things that was not true. As you indicated to the public before, could you just please point out to everyone the things that I said that wasn't true? I'm here because I seen the Juneteenth is being moved up. I thought it was a realignment or whatever you guys do the first of every year. Now it's being, why are we doing it now? In my eyes, in the eyes of most of us in the public, it's pandering to the black vote. You write about some things, this is not a business meeting, but we'll let you have it as a business meeting. We, the public, are the CEOs. You work for us, we don't work for you. You need to be patient with us, allow us to speak, and treat us with respect as we treat you with respect. Calling each other liars don't get us nowhere. We protest, we've been arguing about Juneteenth, and I heard some of the most craziest comments come out of your mouth. I even read, I even read a text message where you blamed all of this on Jerome Prince, and for those of you who don't know who Jerome Prince is, he's the mayor of Gary, Indiana. He said, he said, you said that, he told you it was okay to ignore the Juneteenth holiday. I will put that, I will put that text message on my Facebook page tonight for everyone to read. It's totally inappropriate to pander to, for black, for our black vote. It's just an election. You should have already done something for the black people. You had three years, and you didn't do it. I know one thing that does also disturb me is that you have allowed Mr. Freeman to send emails to the NAACP. I'm also a member in Good Standard with the NAACP Local Branch 3061. I don't like it. Emails go out to David Ashley, Redeem Fellowship, and the NAACP, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Haney... And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Haney, the taxpayers had to pay for those emails, right?
Some of the early ones, yes, I believe so, yes.
And he's lobbying for our our vote. Again, let your actions speak, speak for you. Not, not, not pandering or lying or or being deceitful in the way that we're doing this. This is something that should have been done earlier this year. And then when you came and you put out a news release, you made it clear that you guys are going to do something about it the beginning of the year during realignment. Now seems like the waters are a little bit shaky right now coming to election time, right? And you're pandering for our votes. It's not fair. It's not right. You may not like some of the things I say, and that's fine. I just want you to to respect us as black people. We shouldn't be used. And then I also heard you talk about Tonne and Blank. The sisters are good at Tonne and Blank. I don't have a lot of bad things to say about Tonne and Blank, but their hiring practices is horrible. We brought that to your attention, asking you to put our hiring ordinance together. Didn't want to do it. Mr. Haney was the only one that heard us. And you did go over to the courthouse to see how many black people and how many women was actually working over there. How many did you find, Mr. Haney?
I saw one female supervisor and I don't believe I saw any skilled tradesmen who were persons of color.
None. There was one person they did hire. I will give them that. They did hire. He lasted 10 days and he was gone. I believe it was a $23 million, forgive me on the numbers, I might be wrong, $23 million project. We pay our fair share in taxes. And here we are again. We are looking for, we're not looking for a handout. We're looking for equality. We're looking for fairness. We want something that's right. And you had all this time to do this. I'm just, I'm just sick of this. And when we see you and Dr. Cora was on the board, you could have, you could have done a lot of things. And now you have Mr. Mazinski with you now and things could have been addressed, but it hasn't. But now we see that we need to get some more voters. That's wrong. We shouldn't be doing this. I just feel bad. I hope that all the, all the people in Lapeur County, the black brothers and sisters and the women of this county will wake up and quit giving your unconditional support to the Democratic Party. And just realize, and just realize, the executive director that we elected, Ms. Mateus, she has done nothing for us. You guys talk about four big things you've done. I guess the people in Westville and South County are still waiting on broadband. That was one of the other big issues that never took place. But anyway, I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Allow me to come here and I know times are going to change here pretty soon. You guys are doing everything you can to silence our voice. I wish that would change as well and wake up, America. Wake up, Lapeur County. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Seth, do we have anyone? Okay. No one else in the public wish to speak at this time? Alright, moving on. Next, we have department head comments and reports. Are there any department heads who wish to speak at this time? Mr. Levandowski.
Good evening, Commissioner Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. I got two things I'm gonna bring up today. First one, Rolling Prairie Project. I just wanted to give you an update. Things are moving as best as they can right now. We got hit with a little bit of weather, so it detained the electrical service getting put in, but asphalt's been taken care of. We've got all the seed drilled in. Today, we got most of, most of the yard all done. Do have some sod to put in, so we don't have any washouts, but it is moving at a pace that until, once electric gets in, I think we could get her done before the end of the year if we can get that happening. But they are telling me that if weather turns, it's good. Hopefully, within the next, you know, week, we should have it. So, but if you go by there, it's, it is looking very well. So, next thing I want to bring up, it's something that we've been working on quite a bit. You know, our goal in facilities is to look at all our buildings and try to figure out how we can, you know, improve them. One of the biggest downfalls we've had is our sheriff's garage. The sheriff's garage doesn't have a generator. So we've been always trying to work on that since the beginning of the year. We've looked at different avenues that we could take and kept that in the back of our mind of how we could improve it. You know, when they, power goes out, they're down. If there's an ambulance on the lift, it's, it's stuck there until the power can get back on. So with the move of Michigan City and the Eighth Street closing, what we've looked at is the generator we have there. We have a generator that is only about 10, 12 years old. It replaced the old generator that was there. That was an old diesel one that came from the old German war, war, I believe. It was the one of the wartime generators that was bought. At the same time, I think it was the same one that they had at the county home. So that one was replaced about 12 years ago. It doesn't have very many hours on it at all. We're proposing to take that generator when we cut the power. We're waiting until after election time. Get the power off to the buildings and stuff, take that generator and move it over to the highway garage. We've had it looked at by our building inspectors. They, our electoral inspector agrees it would work. We've had electrical company look at it. The sheriff, I've talked with Sheriff Boyd, he has agreed that he does have the funding, that he can take care of this. We would not have to go to council for it. We just need all of your blessings to actually repurpose this piece of equipment and take it over and use it in a building that is in really good need of it.
Thank you, Ms. Levandowski. I would move to allow Facilities Department working with the Sheriff's Department with their own funding to move the Eighth Street generator to the sheriff's garage.
Second, their motion?
We have a motion and a second to support facilities and working with Sheriff's Department to move the generator from one building to another. Great reuse of a piece of equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Really nice to hear. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Not quite a department head, but I'll be representing our broadband update. Might take a little longer than three minutes, but we're quite excited to be able to do this report.
That's okay.
So on October 7th, we were very fortunate to, oh, do I need to lean in more or can I just, I can't pick it up. I'm sorry, I'll lean. My name is Bailey. I'm from the Office of Economic Development, Community and Economic Development. On October 7th, we were fortunate enough to go to Purdue Northwest to give a report and workshop to the community about what's happening with our broadband and what the task force has accomplished over the last three years. So the first few slides, Seth, if you could transition the next one, are some pictures from the event. We were very fortunate. We had a great turnout. A lot of our task force was there as well as three of our local ISPs being Surf Internet, Comcast, and Acme Communications. All, not all, two of the three did give presentations about where they are deploying and we'll cover that a little later in the presentation. And we were very fortunate to hear from them as to what's going on and how we can help them with some of the stuff. So in the first picture, this is sort of a group shot who was able to stick around after the fact. It was a long workshop, but it was very informative. We were very happy to have everyone there. Next slide, please. We were able to hold a panel discussion to talk about the different facets of broadband, funding, infrastructure, labor, you know, helping to get the stuff in the ground. And we also had Mike Radeski from GIS on our panel to talk about how do we fill the gaps with data. Data is the only way we were able to move this forward and Mike is a huge asset to our office. We cannot thank him enough. We also had the Lapeur County Farm Bureau attend and they did a brief presentation on their survey that they've put together and have used across the state. I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, but Marissa was great and she gave us a lot of really good information about how we can continue to push this forward. So. Next slide, please. I did include a couple pictures of the room who attended and how interested everyone was in the presentation. It was great. No one left in the middle of it, which I think is a huge success. Everyone knows you have a long meeting. It's easy to want to leave and everyone was just so engrossed in the conversation. It was great. And we cannot thank Kevin McGuire enough from Michigan City Area Schools. He emceed our entire event, introduced everyone. He is a great asset to the task force and we're just so thankful that he was able to attend. So. Next slide. We, I have a brief presentation about the highest level of what we gave at that event and sort of what's going on. So if you'll bear with me, I do want to name all of our task force members. We had quite a few in attendance. Sheila, our founding member, Tony Rodriguez, who day to day answers all the phone calls from our different ISPs and all of our residents, how do we move this forward? Mike Bohachek, Indiana State Senator Jim Pressel, Indiana State Representative Pat Boy, Indiana State Representative Randy Novak, Lapeur County Council, Al Wallace from Christopher Burke Engineering. He's been a huge asset, getting our strategic plan together and helping us to put together the broadband deployment roadmap. If you have a chance to look at it before you leave tonight, please do. Scott Sears from KVREMC, Justin Keel, he serves multiple roles on the task force as our South County sort of representative as well as our resident press representative, helping us to tell our story to anybody who will listen.
In addition, Bailey, I can mention that Justin serves as President of the NERCSE, Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission, and they have money. So I'm really pleased that at this event, Ty Warner from NERCSE's Executive Director came. And I know that it was because Justin, Mayor Dermody, and I served with, with Justin on that board and we're getting them to hear Lapeur County's needs.
Yes, and as a sidebar, I did get to talk to Ty. He has taken a large interest in the broadband infrastructure. How does he help to implement that across the region and how he can help Lapeur County to really move it along further? I mean, it's, it's a heavy lift, as we've said, and we'll get into how heavy a lift it is. Tom Fath from Westville, Mary Jane Thomas from Thomason Associates, she's helped us write countless grants for broadband. Richard Payton from Payton Associates, Mary Full from Purdue Extension. I don't have her new name. She was recently married. Mitch Bishop, our Lapeur County Planner, Mike Radeski from GIS, Font Owens from the Lapeur County Public Library, Kevin McGuire, Michigan City Area Schools, Don Parker from Wanata Public Library, Darlene Hale from IT, Mark Scarborough from the Lapeur County Farm Bureau, Roscoe Hoffman, Lapeur County, Mike Schultz, our lovely assessor, and Nelson Picardo from Friedman and Associates. So if we could transition a couple slides, I apologize. Alright, that's perfect. So when we started our workshop, we did want to start with the mission and vision. This is what sort of drives the organization, the task force, any business forward. Making sure that we're clear on what our goals are. And we have our mission to ensure that Lapeur County plans for, transitions to, and prospers in the digital age through transformation into a human-centered, digitally-inclusive, technology-ready ecosystem. I understand it's a mouthful. We really just want to make sure every citizen has internet and has the ability to use it. Next slide, please. So in 2019, when the task force was formed, we did start with an initial survey. And we learned a lot from that survey. Both maps are courtesy of Mike Radeski from GIS. The first one, we learned that we have a lot to learn about broadband. We have a lot to learn about how we capture everyone's data. How do we map it? How do we make sure we're getting the best information we can to drive this forward? So by 2021, we really learned a lot and were able to use a lot of this data to push forward all kinds of things. If you could transition next. And that was really important during COVID. There were a lot of grants that became available and we chased all of them. All of these had different requirements. All of them did want to see some demonstration of data, which after our learning process, we did get that data. We were able to really move it forward and start to advise the state on how to better present data. So, next. And we learned in that process that this is a heavy lift. This is a really heavy lift and we needed to know how heavy. So we approached the Healthcare Foundation to help us fund a fiber-to-the-home study. How much is this ultimately going to cost us? And through the Yate study, we realized this is an $84 million lift. This is not going to happen overnight, but we've made a lot of progress in that time. Next slide, please. And we've had a lot of success over the last three years. Some of the early ones are the Gears Award from Michigan City, which helped to connect a couple hundred students to internet through mobile hotspots. KVREMC is rapidly expanding. The Healthcare Foundation, them funding our study, really helped us take the next step. And in January of 2022, we became the first state in Indiana this year to become broadband-ready. Which helped push us to the third, Third Times the Charm, Next Level Connections Round Three, where we got our first serious amount of money to help put fiber in the ground for, for Lapeur County. And most recently, seeing our success with Sharing Meadows Expansion, helping those disabled adults to be able to be connected to internet. Next, please. And a lot of our mapping, we started with, you know, where are our public infrastructure? Where is some fiber lines already at? Darlene has been absolutely helpful in figuring out where some of our fiber is and how do we sort of work with that? How do we build into more of it and not, you know, double build anything that's already existing? And through all of our work and the successes that we've seen, the green blocks that you see is where a lot of fiber is already going into the ground that we know of, that the ISPs have indicated to us, here's where our grant funding is going. Here's where the money that, you know, you were able to help us achieve is being implemented. And we can see where we need to go next through our survey results. So. Should be last slide next? Yes. So at the presentation, the Farm Bureau helped us to see that data needs to stay up to date. You know, if you've taken a survey for Lapeur County over a year ago, we can no longer use it. It has to be within the last six months. So if you're able to help us know your speeds, know what you're paying, know what company you're using, how you're connected, it helps us to be able to chase more grants and put more fiber in the ground. We know where the gaps are and we really want to continue to push this forward. So. The last thing. We've continued to update the county website with the broadband task force, what's going on, press releases, the surveys are up there. It's also linked on the homepage. If you look at the boxes where you see your agendas and minutes and department heads, we're also in that box. We're also on the scrolling tab. You can also just search it in the search bar. If you can't find our page, please take the survey if you can. We really need to know where, where more of the gaps are and how we can help to fill them. Thank you.
So I have, I have a quick question. So on the website, do we have the Farm Bureau's speed test and our, our speed test, so Mike can continue?
Both are out there.
Okay.
Yes, I made sure this morning to, that they were both up there and visible, so we can capture this data and continue to move it forward.
So I think it's important to note that why do we need that data? So there are lots of federal communication
Yes.
maps out there that the internet service providers, the ISPs that you're talking about, they use that and say, Indiana's all served. If you look at the maps that they provide, it would appear that there are no gaps. That fits their business model. Nobody has the granular data. We need the granular data for us to be able to, be able to prove that we have gaps. If you talk to any citizen around this country, this county, they can tell you they have a gap. But we need to have the data to prove it so that we're, when we're chasing those grant dollars, we can say, this is a real live snapshot picture of what the data problems are in our county. So I think that's important for people to know. All the citizens who gave us those data points, that has helped us raise that's over $7 million in state funding.
Yes, and a lot of that was submitted to the state to help us to achieve some of those dollars. The, as you referenced, the FCC maps, the Federal Communications Commission, they, their maps show a lot of, you know, if you're mobily hooked up and it's a perfectly sunny day and you can absolutely access the internet, it doesn't account for any weather to be present. So any data you're able to provide us, if you can even tell us the time of day you accessed it, it really helps to show that your area is truly not served.
Yep.
I was impressed at that meeting.
Thank you.
How far you've come along.
Yeah.
And all the support that you have. And it's still amazing to me how many people that don't realize, as you said, I think three or four times, about a heavy lift. People think, okay, well, I want internet. Okay, you got it.
Well, I don't know anybody who has $84 million, so.
And people that, I've tried to explain to people, if you live on a, on a road with 30 houses and you all want internet, you're probably going to get it. If you live in the middle of a woods with one other house, it might be a bit. But people just, I don't know, they're crazy about it. They said, well, you said we were going to have internet. Yeah, you will. Sometime in our lifetime, I hope. But I'm still impressed with how far you've come along.
Yes, and as the second largest county in the state, I mean, we've made a lot of progress and we've been the sort of shining beacon for the state as to how early we got to a lot of these things. I mean, you look back at when the broadband task force was formed, we were one of the first in the state. It very early on. And as you've seen, the state evolve and all of the individual counties and municipalities, I mean, we've sort of led this charge as to how you handle the broadband issue. So.
So on, on that note, I want to raise two moments of success. So Ty Warner from NERCSE came to this meeting. And at the end of the meeting, he asked if we would go to their board meeting and present to all the seven counties so that they, all the municipalities and the county leaders across the seven counties could hear what we have learned and be able to kind of follow, follow that template. And the second thing is I was at an event in Lapeur City a week ago and a citizen pushing her stroller came up to me and said, we finally have broadband. and a citizen pushing her stroller came up to me and said, we finally have broadband. Those are little nuggets of good news. So it is being deployed. It is, you know, a very expensive process, but we are not taking no for an answer. So thank you for your presentation.
And then I'll pass it over to Tony. He does have a couple of updates on some other broadband stuff we're working on now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. Tony Rodriguez, Director of Community and Economic Development. Bailey did an absolutely fine job of portraying where we've come. I think what, versus my reading through these prepared comments, I'd like to touch on just a few critical components that tie directly into where we're at. And that is, the state of Indiana, through the Indiana Broadband Office, is embarking on the BEED process, very exciting undertaking for the state of Indiana. Because what that consists of is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment, which is where the BEED acronym comes from. It's the BEED and Digital Equity Programs that are both tied in hand and glove. The federal government, through the Infrastructure and Works Act, is, has dedicated roughly $1 billion to the state of Indiana. And the state of Indiana has sought out, because of the fact that we were early in the process of creating a broadband task force, for us to be an advocate and participant in their five-year strategic planning process. I mention that because of the timeliness of heavy, I won't mention the term heavy lift. It is, it is critical that the residents who play such a vital role in completing this task. We, I would point out, you've heard, all heard the term third time's a charm. Each time we applied with the help of our, the entire team, which was sizable in effort and energy. But we learned that what was more than likely going to move the needle was engagement of that community. And we had close to 50 residents of Laporte County from the neighborhoods handwriting letters saying, please assist us. And that made a difference. I would also just give a shout out to the Laporte County Farm Bureau's Board of Directors and their intimate support of our efforts to not only get an audience downstate with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, but to, as the commissioners mentioned, to assure we were on, directly on track with the data and continually accessing the survey information to demonstrate that these holes do exist. Both the federal and state government recognize and are willing to say out loud publicly that the FCC maps are flawed, that it's a known fact. They're working on it. I would just simply close with, there are many points and opportunities here within the coming months to become actively engaged as a resident in this process. And I couldn't be more excited about the fact that the Laporte County Rural Broadband Task Force, which is, we must find a way to change that name into something shorter, more functional, easily repeated and memorized. And we will do that. But the county's website has been updated. This information is critical that we remain in close communication with the residents and those that are waiting. This, there is nothing more important to our farm, to our agricultural partners in Laporte County than this connectivity. It's going to help them on yield. It's going to help them on telehealth. It's going to help them with their families attending remote school when necessary. And we've all learned that is on a much more frequent basis. So with that, I would close with, other than all of the thank yous that continue to be necessary to thank those that continue to contribute, we've circulated a departmental update. I would ask you to read through that. As you'll see, our hands are full. We are very excited to be working with the number of active prospects that we are. Kingsbury Industrial Park and the advancements being made with the Laporte County Redevelopment Commission are truly astounding. And we're bragging about that. I was with a corporation this morning at 11:00 AM, and they are asking the question about how do we become a manufacturer at the Kingsbury Industrial Park? So we couldn't be more excited. If you have any questions at all, please feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to provide more information. One of the toughest things of my job as Director of Economic Development is not being able to talk about the things that we're doing. And that's to protect both the prospective investors and the challenging process they have to go through to get their necessary approval. So with that, thank you for your time.
Tony, if you have just a minute, I wanted to say thank you for the hard work you've been putting in this past year. These past several months, I've reached out to some various legislators, including Senator Charbonneau as well, who's been looking closely into this, trying to figure out exactly where some of the disconnect was on those first two rounds of rural broadband funding we didn't get in on. And it was there that I learned that, for whatever reason, the state didn't recognize Laporte County until it was the 61st, I believe, county in the state to be recognized for rural broadband programs. I think that's why we lost out on those first two rounds. But I think it's interesting, Commissioner Merzinski was talking about, you know, you just can't snap your fingers and get broadband everywhere at once. It's definitely true. And I think it's important to point out, one of the good things just recently happened. We had an OKRA grant as part of 20 counties in this area. We're getting some additional funding. I don't know if you saw that come out yet, but that was just approved and went through this week. So we'll be getting a little more funding there. Unfortunately, we're going to have to split it with 20 counties. But at least it's more money coming in. Anytime government throws money at things, unfortunately, it raises costs. And one of the things that we've seen so far along the way that kind of relates to more money being dumped in, the more you have multiple communities and multiple areas putting in fiber at one time, you know, there's supply and demand. So one of the things, for example, the $84 million that was originally quoted, I think, I think we're, I think that number may be what we're seeing here now woefully inadequate. So if I look at some of the original grants that were done, there was 155 homes in one business for a total between the $241,000 grant and the $588,000 local match for $829,000. 155 homes in one business. So it was $5,300 per location to get that in. And you look to the next one, 4.4 million grant with $2 million local for $6.4 million total for 953 homes. That brought it up to 6,794 per house. One of the more, one of the most recent ones was the 188 homes in nine businesses. There was a total of $2.6 million, and that came out to $13,408 per residence. At the most recent cost where we've seen that being into the ground where it's being subsidized by government, the $84 million that was originally projected would only serve 6,000 homes. So there's obviously a lot looking going forward. And we maybe need, not us here in the county, but as far as a state and national objective, be looking at reasonably finding a way to start controlling these costs. Because at the current rate that they're going up from, you know, $5,300 to $6,700 to, you know, $13,400 per home, it's certainly alarming, the astronomical amount. And that's just what's happened in this past year. So.
It is, and thank you, Commissioner. That homework and that observation is always, can only be helpful to the process. The 80, the successful grant that was written to the Healthcare Foundation that allowed us to go out and then secure what our to-the-home last mile delivery cost at the estimated $84 million is absolutely critical so that we're prepared to then participate in the state's five-year strategic planning process. What you're seeing in that increased cost is Laporte County's geography. We are truly spread out, second-largest city and area county in the state. The blessing that we have is our head start and the early work that's being done by the task force. That number, the $84 million, is an estimate that the task force can use as a guidepost. The great thing is, each one of the OKRA grants that were successful reduces that cost because these people are being taken out of that particular township's deliverable. We, not even yet mentioned, because of the amount of limited time here at your commissioner meetings, are things like the recent contact from Frontier Communication that's reached out. I believe you may have been copied on the communication. These companies are recognizing this will be a missed opportunity for them unless they step up and start spending their money. They are now racing to get to the table to be investors in Laporte County because of the fact that we have become a broadband-ready community, and we can eliminate and expedite the barriers that are clearly shown on this broadband deployment. And the reason we brought that illustration is, if you get a chance to look at that, it will either, one, put you to sleep, or, two, make you call an attorney. And we show that because it is, the complexity is, quite frankly, very few, a small business would not have the ability to navigate getting into this, which is why we couldn't be more excited for these small companies like Acme Communication, Surf Internet, that these are locally-owned investors pouring their money into Laporte County, and they're betting on the future. I, quite frankly, if the public had access to be able to invest in these companies, they would be wise. It's the future of the economy and also attached to the, this handout and the explanation of what we're working on, and not mentioned, after we recognize everyone's being connected and we're successful in that, the remote workers of this world, it's a staggering statistic. How many people are now working remotely, have the ability to live anywhere in the world if they have a broadband connection, a reliable broadband connection? That's what's exciting. That's why I attached it to this month's report. I just wanted to, the state of Indiana is wisely understanding this is the future. We need to be cognizant of it. Let's get, and the commitment made by the governor of the state of Indiana was, we will connect every Hoosier. And they want to do that in the most cost-efficient manner that they can. So we absolutely have to continue to work collaboratively and assist our cooperative partners in competing to be the low-cost provider. And that's where I would applaud the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. In this Phase III grant process, they really, each time they offered the next round of funding, they advanced and got more competitive and more descriptive on how the awards were made. In other words, the low bidder, after submitting the proposal, the low bidder was opened back up and allowed to be challenged by another competitor, which, quite frankly, I applaud Indiana, but the most important thing is we were successful in that grant round, and I applaud the team for getting that done.
Thank you, boss. Thank you.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak?
I was just going to say, very briefly, part of our success with Round Three, which our, Tony has helped our delegation tremendously to change the legislation in Indiana. Previously, we were not a state that had high upload and download speeds. So changing that legislation has also helped, and Tony was a huge advocate for that at our regional level. That's been a big contributor to why we are starting to see broadband money coming to our community. And I just wanted to make sure that that was noted, that legislation was changed, and that's how we're really moving it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone online, Seth, that you can see? No?
Madam President, I have a report this evening.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I want to pick back up and follow up on some work I did earlier last year as far as whistleblower protection, and want to give a bit of an update and a look back over these past roughly 22 months. At the time, you know, over these past couple of several, you know, 20 months roughly, times have been cryptic, in some of my, some of my verbiage, some of my wording. Quite frankly, I've had to do that to protect employees. I've had to protect employees and department heads to make sure that no retribution was dished out among them. I think it's important to know that one of the issues that we can come up with in a power structure, such as a Board of Commissioners, is that two of three people can exert nearly ultimate control over a county by working together. The structure makes retaliation against an employee who wishes to come forward very difficult. That's why I pushed so hard for whistleblower protection ordinance. I wish it had had more teeth. But I wanted to revisit this because I think it's important to now that when an employee wishes to blow the whistle, they should be able to. And I feel like, and I've heard since then, that there is a very real, clear and ever-present danger that a lot of employees believe in, that whistleblower protection we have isn't enough. I'd like to give three specific examples of that this evening here tonight. The first here is, and again, I apologize in the past for being cryptic. I don't think it's been, unfortunately, and for some of these still ongoing issues, I do have to be cryptic. But tonight, I can speak from either firsthand accounts of what I've seen and witnessed myself, documentation that I've become aware of, as well as reports from individuals who have retired and enough distances passed to be able to put distance between them and what they experienced while they were here. First issue I'd like to speak about here this evening is abuse of power and intimidation at Laporte County Vaccine Clinics. Earlier last year, if you go back to the pandemic when the vaccine clinic started, you'll remember that in the beginning phases, we had a very set of guidelines from the state and from the federal government on who could be vaccinated and when, starting in different stages. And until you made it to the stage where you were able to vaccinate, you cannot be vaccinated. The state was very clear on that. We actually had one clinic in the state that was shut down because they violated those procedures. I can, I can speak with authority on this now. I've heard, obviously, from multiple, multiple people at the Department of Health. But I can speak clearly to this because one of these individuals has been so far removed now and retired that it is no longer any risk of blowback or intimidation to him or any of his family members. So. Commissioner Mateus sent approximately 12 individuals to the Laporte County Vaccine Clinic who are not eligible.
Mr. Haney, I'm interrupting you.
Yes, ma'am.
You have not reported this to us as your colleagues. You've not reported to the Board of, there's a board at the Health Department. Have you reported whatever these things are to those people?
Well, I know you're aware of this one because you engaged in this intimidation and harassment.
Okay, this is not the place for this. You are out of order.
It is.
You are out of order.
It is. Madam President.
You are out of order, sir. You have not discussed this with me. Whatever you're going to say, I have not had the clarity and the respect.
Are you denying you sent 12 people to the vaccine clinic and that an employee nearly resigned over it? You put our vaccine program in jeopardy?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
You did not send 12 individuals to vaccine clinics
Sir.
who were not authorized to be vaccinated at the time?
I have no idea what you're talking about. So this is what I'm talking about. The fact that I don't even know what you're talking about would lead me to believe that you should have the courtesy of being a businessperson and talking to me about it. If you have an issue, I demand that you respect me like I try to respect you and discuss it with me. So please, hold your comments until you've discussed it with the Health Board, with me, with Amanda Launners. All, I think that would be appropriate. So thank you very much.
Be appropriate.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Haney.
I understand Commissioner Merzinski isn't going to want to hear this because one of these incidents of harassment involves you, Commissioner Merzinski, and Commissioner Mateus, you were present for that as well. It is a business meeting. And I am here to work for and protect and defend the people of Laporte County and the employees of this county.
So we'll discuss that internally as commissioners, as.
You want to discuss it internally?
Yes.
So it can get swept under the rug.
I just want to know what you're talking about, where I have an opportunity to understand.
I'd be more than happy to clearly explain it to you right now.
Thank you.
Right here, right now.
We're not going to discuss it right now because I have no idea what you're talking about. And our rules are really clear. If you have a complaint with a, I don't have the rules in front of me.
The rules are clear for the public. I'm not a member of the public. I am a sitting commissioner of equal authority to any of the three of us up here today.
It's not the place to bring your complaints about me or about your fellow Commissioner Merzinski. If you have a complaint about us, be respectful and bring it up to us so that we can try to address that concern. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Our employees here need this protection.
I sent hundreds of people to the vaccine clinics to. I sent hundreds of people to the Vaccine Clinics, to be honest. I've sent hundreds of people over the time of COVID, every time someone called me or talked to me, I told them where they could get their vaccine. Yes, I did.
Did you instruct these people to be vaccinated and to have the Health Department be ordered to vaccinate them because Commissioner Mathias said so?
No, no, sir, I didn't.
Never once?
Not that I.
Never once. You're calling dozen, at least a dozen people liars right now then.
I have no idea what you're talking about, so maybe if you could clarify that off the record, in our office, where we sit, you're in your office, I'm in mine, the door is open, you can come in anytime to discuss it with me. Thank you. Do you have anything else to talk about right now?
I do. I would actually, for our Sheriff's Department sitting in the background, there's one incident specifically that I believe documentation currently exists that's just become aware to me in the past few days in regards to something happened within the past two weeks, whether the Sheriff's Department decides they want to address it or forward on to the State Police or perhaps federal authorities, it's up to them. I believe this week, our IT Director was intimidated and forced to send out an email against her will in threat of her job, and I believe the documentation for that exists in a digital format.
If you have something to talk to Sheriff Boyd about, there's an opportunity for you to call him, have him come to the office to talk to you. If you have a complaint, this is not the place to raise complaints about our IT Director.
No, my complaint is not about our IT Director.
Do you really think that this is an appropriate place for you to be discussing personnel matters in front of everyone when the person?
This isn't a personnel matter, this is an elected official matter.
It had to do with the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Boyd, he will, I'm sure, be happy to hear whatever the complaint is in the appropriate setting. This is not the setting for that.
We have an employee just this past week who was intimidated and threatened for her job, I believe.
Then we should start an investigation on that, and this is not an investigatory body. Sheriff Boyd is the investigator for our county. I'm sure if there's a complaint, he would be happy to manage it with Major Sisser or whomever. Am I speaking correctly, Sheriff Boyd? That would be the appropriate place.
That, and I agree with you, Sheriff Boyd, that is where my issue lies. In order for someone, whatever it is, to be intimidated, people have to feel safe to be able to come forward. People have to know, I am saying these things now for these different individuals where they've come up, so the people, so these employees, these department heads know that it's okay to come forward, they are not alone. This has happened to multiple employees and department heads in this county, and they're not alone. If you come forward, blow the whistle now, you will have protection, you will be protected, and for things that are happening via cyber, via possible cyber crimes, those can be forwarded on to federal authorities and prosecuted federally if they need to be. You don't even have to worry about whether this is being prosecuted here locally by a local prosecutor. Any employee, contractor or department head in La Porte County should understand that it is a crime to threaten, coerce, intimidate, or anyone in their position. And I will stand with them, I know the men and women of law enforcement in La Porte County, in the state, as well as the federal agencies, will do it. People need to realize that it is safe, it is okay to blow the whistle, you are not alone, you start coming forward, people will come forward and stand up with you. If you stand up publicly and blow the whistle, you cannot be touched, you will not be fired, you will be protected, and you have the right to be and to know that you can come forward. Again, you are not alone, and you aren't just standing up for yourself, you're standing up for everyone else in La Porte County. We have to put an end to this, we have to put an end to it now, and I really wish we could discuss these issues here tonight further so that we could continue to bring light to a situation that has put darkness over this county for way too long.
Thank you for your comments. I don't think either of, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Merzinski, but I'll speak for myself. If there is any employee out there who feels intimidated, who feels threatened or harassed, please reach out to me and I will take care of my part of it. I will make sure that you are safe and that you do not worry about your position or your job. To act as if this is a huge problem, I've worked here for three years, maybe it's a problem I'm not aware of, but people have not come up to me and told me that they have issues. They only have talked to Mr. Haney apparently, but please be sure to realize that there are three commissioners and we are very happy to hear any issues that you have, we'll work with you to solve them. Thank you. Commissioner Merzinski, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say before we move on?
No, I work in the real world. I'm in my office every day. Joe wants to talk to me, he'll stop in sometime and talk to me. And if it's something that has the truth, then I'll sit and listen to him. But he's gonna just go on with all this whatever. We do have a department for this. We have an HR department. Does anything make go onto HR? No? Probably not. Move on.
All right. Do we have any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Let's move on to requests. We have a request to consider pay for 60 sick days to Jean Mahaffey, who is retiring on Judge Stalbrink's.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Judge Stalbrink's request to pay sick days to a retiring employee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we have considered permission to approach the council for additional appropriations for NIPSCO.
Motion to approve, second.
So this is a request for $5,000 by Park Department Jeremy Sebeki, who is, needs additional funds for their power bill.
If I may, friendly amendment to that, I now, I just recall an email just came in right before the meeting from Superintendent Sebeski, asking if we could increase that amount.
To $5,000, I think?
I don't recall the exact dollar amount. Was it five? Okay, yeah, to make sure he gets through next month.
Yeah, I added that when I was calling out the amount of the appropriation.
I'm sorry, did you say five?
Yeah, I did, that was in the email.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion, what he asked for, permission to approach the council.
All right, we have a motion.
All right, in a second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation of $2,000 for office supplies, request for HR administrative assistant to go from part-time to full-time, and reclassification of the HR assistant position to unclassified, and this is by Monique Thomas. Monique, I don't know if you're on.
She had a family issue, I've talked to her about it, she's in my office almost every day, we've talked about this at length, she wants, it's not something that we decide on anyway, she wants to go to the council, that's what she's asking for. Permission to approach the council, I would make a motion that we grant her permission to approach the council for the issues that she's brought up here.
Second.
Yeah, Monique has talked to all three of us about this request, and it certainly sounds like she's got lots of data to back her up. So all those in favor of allowing Monique Thomas to approach the council for the three items that we mentioned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, under Old Business, we have considered the Franklin Street Bridge.
Thank you, Madam President. We've had some emails and spirited conversation back and forth. I was at the council workshop last night with the council, and they voted 7-0 with the motion of support for dispensation to the auditor for paying any bills related to this project, and it's their desire that we move forward with the WJE proposal that came in on September 9th. I think, I think it is as, I think it's, at this point, after spending, I spent the last six days after Commissioner Merzinski at the last meeting was very adamant that the bridge would likely fail next year, and I was curious as to, as to why he would be so adamant about that. So I spent some time these past six, seven days going through, looking up everything that I could, doing backtracking to come up with to contact Paul Bandlow with WJE. During my conversations with him, I learned that he had submitted some engineering work for this project back in early September. I then reached out to, there's no need to get into names of companies, but anyway, I reached out to another great company here locally, they were able to forward on to me the 29-page packet that was sent out. Unfortunately, I don't believe I ever received that prior to it being forwarded over, which is why at the last meeting I was a little confused as to why we wanted to go with USI. I'm still, you know, obviously, still confused about that, I don't know why we would go with a company that doesn't have any movable bridge experience, let alone bascule bridge experience, but after talking, speaking with the council and their desire to move forward to make sure that the bridge is operational and continues to be operational for next year, I believe the appropriate course of action would be to move forward with the WJE proposal. This year, I think we have sufficient evidence, I feel like probably, probably the council would agree that whether it's a special purchase statute or emergency declaration, we can move forward with that. So to give some support for you, Madam President, in the event of an emergency declaration, I would make a motion to support any emergency declaration that would move forward to, move forward with this WJE proposal so we make sure the bridge is operational next year.
So my understanding is that Mark Waselcik, who is our expert on the bridge and has been for almost 40 years, does not believe this is an emergency situation. So while we may want to talk about how do we do a single-source provider for any work on the bridge, we had a five-year plan, the council was really clear in saying, well, we need to go out for bid. Two weeks ago, you said we needed to go out for bid, could we, you know, I don't want us to get it back into that trick bag we had last year where we were, people didn't feel like they were going to get paid and around the bridge. So I'm going to ask Mr. Friedman, what is your, you know, I saw the email traffic this afternoon about the, you know, if it isn't an emergency, which it doesn't sound like it is, is there, you know, is there a way that we can use a single-source provider and how do we get from here to there?
Yes, as you saw with the email, both Mr. DiMartino and myself have indicated the terms of the WJE letter do not qualify for an emergency declaration. That leaves you then with the special purchase statute. And while I'm heartened that Mr. Haney has all of a sudden done a 180 and now thinks the special purchase right way is the right to go, if he'd listened to us about a year ago, rather than lodging claims that it was wrong and unethical for my office to propose that and even going around me to the State Board of Accounts and then calling county government a vat of filth and wanting me fired over this, I might be more sympathetic to his change of heart.
Point of order? I thought we were going to be businesslike about this, Commissioner Mathias.
Commissioner Merzinski and I have said for one year.
Please, okay.
I thought we were going to be businesslike about this.
Commissioner Mathias, Commissioner Merzinski, and I have said for one year.
Please, please remove any disrespectful language from me.
There's no disrespectful, I'm talking the right.
Okay. It sounded a little disrespectful to me.
He referred me to my state's disciplinary commissioner.
I understand, that had to be.
Yeah, it wasn't helpful. What I've said for two, for a year, and that both of you have agreed on, and why we proposed the special purchase statute last year, one, it's a historic, one-of-a-kind, unique bridge with specially-designed parts and fittings, and two, with the threat of imminent drive failure last year, it was critical to move forward even over the auditor's objections to get the.
Then why didn't you declare an emergency?
Now we've been.
Why didn't you declare an emergency a year ago?
Sir, Mr. Staples, if you'd like to talk about it afterwards, you can, but let him finish.
Now we've been advised by USI and others that unless the commission, the council, and the auditor are all together and agree to use the special purchase route, we have no choice but to go the competitive sealed bid route. And Commissioner Haney, and I congratulate you for finally discovering this past week in your six-days investigation what we've been saying for a year, the sealed bid route will be more time-consuming, more elaborate, and far more costly to taxpayers. We agree. But we've got no choice now. The auditor made it abundantly clear in an October 10th email, he's not paying the bills unless it's competitively bid. He then.
I did not say, I did not say that.
He then followed up today.
I did not say that.
He then followed up, he suggested maybe bidding the labor and not parts. Again, we can't be a little bit pregnant about this, it's either one or the other. Now fortunately, unlike last year, and I want to make this very clear, there is no risk of imminent drive failure, and our vendor assures us his team is available to have the bridge open and operable by March 15th and can still respond to emergency needs. There is no basis for an emergency declaration, Mr. DiMartino wrote that this afternoon, as did I. And what I have said is the ball is now in the auditor's court.
I didn't see that letter. I didn't get that letter.
I am now recommending.
One at a time, if we can.
I'm now recommending, I'm not recommending declaration of an emergency, but I'm willing to go forward with a recommendation to you all that you use the special purchase statute again this year, but only if the auditor waives in writing any objections and stops demanding joint resolutions, waivers, or indemnification by the commissioners and the council. If you can get them to agree to that, we're good. And Mr. Haney, I think you and Mr. Cunningham approached him to do that, and instead, he didn't do that last night, did he, at the council meeting?
I think, thank you, Mr. Friedman, I think there was some confusion and there was some difficult, technical difficulty in him joining the meeting on time that prevented him from being a couple minutes late. So as of right now, the council has extended the, I keep saying dispensation, I don't know what the appropriate term is, from last year moving forward if we move ahead with special purchase statute. So there's already that, hopefully that would be sufficient. I know, I know, the six-days investigation was around the 29-page document for proposal from WJE and the other companies here, I was never provided with. So as I was trying to turn up and investigate exactly what some of the things I was hearing was and why the council kind of, from my perspective, came out of the blue with their first thing before, the council didn't come out of the blue, they did it because they were, you know, their council president forward to all their members this 29-page proposal. I never received it from my fellow commissioners, I had to find out the hard way, you know, just a few days ago. That's why when I realized this proposal, this engineering was already out there and done, I tracked down the people who did it, the supporting companies, to get all the information I could from it. And in the letter from them, and I know we'll have a friendly disagreement here for my conversations, especially with Paul Bandlow, and he did put in writing here, he is much more couched in this letter than he was on the phone, but he says these components can no longer be considered reliable. That obviously isn't saying it's imminent failure. The information he gave me about the tail locks and the actuators, for example, and how they're negatively affected by cold weather and opening the bridge back up March 15th, apparently these locks were designed for a bridge in a temperate climate where temperatures generally don't drop below 50 degrees. That's something I was never aware of until this week, nobody had ever actually even told me that. It was good to find that out. So we have these tail locks and actuators that are not designed for our temperature, and they're no longer, according to this, no longer considered reliable. And according to this, should the full engineering, other engineering work go forward, we're looking at about two years. That is, two years is a long time for the Michigan City Bridge to be down. So for, for parts that are no longer considered reliable and, and delay of up to two years to get the proposed design-build method, I think that, personally, I think that would qualify as an emergency, but either way, I think in this instance, because we are up against the wall and WJE has told me that we have one to two weeks to get this finalized and done, or we will not have the parts in time to get this fixed this year, we're so far behind the eight ball at this point, I don't see where I have any other point to either declare an emergency or go special purchase statute. I don't know how we move forward and have an operable bridge next year any other way.
Well, I did, I don't know if you got the 5:00 PM email that Council Attorney DiMartino sent, you were copied on it. He said, and I'm clear on this, "Thanks for sending this over, Mr. Novak, I do not see anything in the language of WJE that would support an emergency declaration," and I agree with him. Specifically, listen to the wording, listen to the wording, and I said that to both Mr. Staples and yourself. "The components being replaced are beyond their service life and regularly require repair and sometimes repairs on an emergency basis, leaving the bridge out or service to vehicular marine traffic. These components can no longer be considered reliable, and we've become more reliable as time passes. We think it's in the best interest of all stakeholders to do the work sooner rather than later. The best way to do this is the proposed design-build method." You know what Mr. DiMartino says? WJE's letter simply states the components are old and may sometimes require emergency repairs, and further, they're not reliable. That says nothing about an emergency. And so what you have, Mr. Haney, respectfully, is both the commission attorney and the council attorney saying, "We can't recommend emergency declaration." So what does that leave you with? It leaves you with the special purchase statute, and what Mr. Skiat has specifically asked Mr. Staples is to waive objections to the special purchase statute and agree to pay the bills as submitted. If he will do that, and he asks for that in writing, we're good to go.
Did, did, did Mr. Skiat ask for that in writing, or did you ask for that in writing?
Yeah, he asked for it in writing.
I, he just asked for assurances, I mean, in a sign written.
Sir.
I'd like to comment at some point.
I'm telling you what he asked for, and you know what, it's, I understand.
If we could, let me rephrase that, if we could get a, as the council's already offered and made a preemptive motion of dispensation, if you will, for the auditor, would, Mr. Auditor, would you be all right in accepting the council's dispensation, whatever the appropriate verbiage is, to, to, well, would you be amenable to that?
I have said that I don't want language crammed down my throat as to what is to be said that I'm supposed to be okay with, that I like to be a part of devising the language, I don't have my own attorney, I have him. I don't have my own attorney, I have him. And I have Mr. Di Martino, who had said yesterday at the council meeting that it was a quasi-emergency. Some email went out at 5:00. Admittedly, I sent an email out today. There's a lot of emails flying back and forth. I wasn't included in that email, which is an insult, but that's besides the point. "This project should have been brought out months ago, so we're not fighting like this again with this last-minute stuff. And, Mr. Auditor, you better do something, or else we're hanging something over your head. I don't like to be put under duress or pressure. It's unbecoming, and it's degrading to my office, and my responsibility is to La Porte County. I'll be very clear about this. Stop pretending that this is about the special purchase statute, and don't say we're using the special purchase statute, because we're not. Because the State Board of Accounts said a year ago, and I'm going to repeat this, this is my turn, in August 17, 2021, based on documentation provided by representatives of La Porte County, that would probably be Mr. Friedman, SBWA's audit position is that the Franklin Street Bridge project must comply with competitive bid requirements under Indiana's public work laws, Indiana Code 36-1-12, as the project is a public work, bridge construction, alteration, or repair within the plain and ordinary meaning of the code. Further, this interpretation is consistent with legislative intent and context for Indiana's public works laws designed, quote, "to safeguard the public against fraud, favoritism, graft, extravagance, improvidence, and corruption, and to ensure honest competition, et cetera." Therefore, therefore, State Board of Accounts, Indiana special purchase laws do not apply to the project pursuant to Indiana Code. So stop saying that the special purchase statute applies, we're going to use it. He made, let me finish. He made that claim, he was wrong about that. So stop saying that. What we are seeking is, and this is the language I would ask you for, dispensation is fine for the auditor as to possible violations of the public purchasing statutes. It is not a special purchase. So that, I would ask for a motion from you, and it's fine, you don't have to sign it, just make the motion, it'll be a public meeting, I'll be happy enough. Dispensation for the auditor as to possible violations of the public purchasing statutes of the state of Indiana if he pays claims. You do that, I'll pay the claim.
I-
That doesn't sound like a waiver of objection.
I would, I would make that motion. I would like to see the project move forward.
This is, I want to be sure we're not in an uncomfortable position for you, Mr. Auditor. I know you have concerns, so you want to be sure that you do the right thing. But the bridge in Michigan City is a public safety issue. Emergency vehicles use that bridge all the time. Many of our citizens use it to access the lakefront and to access the neighborhoods. But more importantly, it's a public safety. So to, you know, whether the parts are reliable or not reliable, or emergency or not emergency, is really immaterial to me. I think we need to look out for the public and do it at the lowest cost. So to me, your request for that language, if that's going to get us to do year two of a five-year plan, I say I would be supportive of that. I don't know what you're feeling about that. It's Mr. Rosinski.
First of all, I want to correct you. I've been talking about this bridge since May. I've been talking to the council about it since May. I brought it up in commissioner meetings since May, that we had to get work done. We made the commitment last year for a million dollars a year for five years. Council decided, they chose to fund it a million and a half for one year. And I've asked them countless times, are you going to honor what we posted, a million dollars a year for five years? I'm getting nothing from them. It finally got down to the September meeting, I don't remember if you were there or on vacation again, but I brought it up and I said, "We're down to crunch time, boys. We're going to have to get it done. Otherwise, it may not open in spring." Okay? And Mr. Rosenbaum made the motion, "Oh, it's over $150,000. Therefore, we have to go to the bid process." So, well, you can do that. But talking with their engineering firm, they said, "You can count on at least $100,000 for that, to put that bid package together, and it's not going to be done overnight." So here we are, down to crunch time. I've mentioned several times, speaking with WJE and also with Mark was, the parts that they have to order. They have to be ordered, they have to be made special for this bridge. If that ain't a special purchase, I don't know what the heck it is. But it said you can count on at least four months to make these special parts. Okay? Can't buy them at the store. You can't put out a bid for some company in Arizona that's going to have anything, know anything about our bridge. The same people, working on it for 30-some years, know what it needs, and those parts need to be special made, and you're going to take four months to do so. That's what we're at. Now, does that sound like a special purchase? I mean, it does to me.
Not under the statute.
So.
For the parts only, for the parts only. Mr. Di Martino said that last night, that he thought the parts would be the special purchase. If he's changed, he can speak for himself. I heard him say that last night, but if he, I think we're in agreement, I want to cooperate here, and I appreciate what you said, Commissioner, the Commission President.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that we need to, whatever.
I think one of the things that we've learned-
This is about public safety, it's about getting the best price on this, and if we go out for bid, we are layering price and paying consultants, and it takes too long, and the bridge in Michigan City is an essential part of the lakefront from just a public safety perspective. So I would ask for support of the motion.
And I just want to be clear what the waiver is. So you have no objection to use of either labor or parts, the special purchase statute, and you will pay the claims as submitted?
It is not utilization of the public purchase statute. That's not, that's not approvable. It's dispensation for the auditor as to any possible violations of the public purchasing statutes, and that the commission wishes me to move forward, regardless of that.
It's utilization of the special purchase-
It is not utilization of the special purchase statute. It is absolutely not.
How are you sure you're going to do it? You got to have a point in statute in order to be able to do it, either emergency or the special purchase statute.
That's a waiver of any possible violations of the public purchasing statute.
The authorization would be utilize the special purchase statute.
With a straight face, you're going to still say the special purchase statute applies? When I just read you that it doesn't-
I think we're all trying, excuse me, gentlemen, I think we're all trying to get to the same place here. There's a motion on the floor. It's sufficient, sufficient for me, it's sufficient for, if it's sufficient for one of the two of you, just, we'll just move forward.
But we need to be clear what it is, because I don't want him later interposing objections.
I don't think he will. He just, he just said he would pay the bills, so I think we're good there. I'm going to take that for as it is.
What is it you're seeking? Just leak coverage in the event the State Board of Accounts takes exception?
Okay. All right. I think, Mr. Haney, are you willing to support it?
Say the motion again.
Yeah.
Well, I just said that this was a form of dispensation for the auditor as to possible violations of the public, alleged or possible violations.
Not going to concede their violations of the special purchase statute in this motion.
I didn't say alleged, and the original verbiage I, that I motioned for was dispensation for the auditor of any possible violations of purchase statutes.
On this historic structure?
On this historic structure. Thank you, Madam President.
Could you have that be public purchase statutes, please?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
In other words, what we're saying is, we're going to fix the bridge and you're going to pay for it.
Correct.
Put that in simple terms, because you're afraid of the State Board of Accounts, that you called Paper Tiger, and that they're out the lawn, and I know. Yeah, I'll say.
Knock it off.
Just to get this thing moving, because it is a public safety thing. You don't cross the bridge, a lot of people do.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to move the Franklin Street Bridge process forward for year two of our reclamation and renovation project.
And it's got to be clear in the motion, what we're utilizing, the special purchase statute, and to agree to indemnify or legally defend the auditor in the event there is a challenge by anyone to the, to the propriety of using that particular statute.
I'm not acknowledging the use of the special purchase. I just read that it doesn't apply here, so I can't believe you're still maintaining that claim.
Right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, under new business, we have consider appointing Marika Beatty to the permanent position of Executive Director of Community Corrections, per the unanimous recommendation of the Community Corrections Board, Mr. Lake.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
It's been an interesting meeting, I can say that. I am proud to announce that the, I'm here with a recommendation unanimously from the Advisory Board of the Community Corrections for Marika Beatty to be the next, recommend that you hire her and consider her to be hired as the next Executive Director of Community Corrections. And I, I'm here to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Marika Beatty as the new Executive Director of Community Corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion is carried. Marika, you're doing a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have consider the 2023 holiday calendar. You have it in your packet. I don't think Monique is, unfortunately, Monique was not able to join us tonight because of a family issue. But you have the 2023 La Porte County Government Holidays. We have not removed any holiday that is existing in 2022, and we have added Juneteenth, Monday, June 19, 2023, which was named a federal holiday last June 17 by President Biden. It became a federal holiday, and it is on the federal holiday calendar for this year. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this list of holidays.
Madam President, I'm curious, has there ever been an instance where a holiday calendar was approved the year prior, as opposed to, I know in my time here on the commission, and for as far back as I can remember, the holiday schedule is always approved in January at the first meeting, the organizational meeting of every year. I don't, I'm not aware of a time when holiday calendar was ever approved in November.
Yes. At your request, we went ahead and took a look back, and it turns out that the holiday calendars were approved, for instance, for 2022 on November 3 of 2021, 2020, the 11, or November 10 of 2020, November 6 of 2019, and October 17 of 2018. So no, there's nothing not usual or customary about proving those dates in the fourth quarter, and that is the way it's been done the last six years.
Well, we've done it as a convenience and out of respect for our employees, so they can plan their holidays and their year ahead. In fact, I work at Purdue Northwest, and we already have gotten the approved holiday schedule from the Board of Trustees of Purdue. So I think it's normal just to make sure that they have-
So our organizational meeting last year and the year before that, we were just double approving it then in January?
Yeah, we just announced it as we're going through all our boards and commissions and everything, yes. It had already been approved.
It's never, it's never approved in January. The holidays are approved in the fourth quarter. It is the meeting dates that you approve at that organizational meeting.
The holiday calendars were-
They're included as a courtesy to you. They're included as a courtesy, but the actual approvals happen in the fourth quarter, and they have for the last six or seven years.
Motion to approve, as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I am glad to see that we are, we are not skipping anything this year. Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2023 La Porte County Government Holiday Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bailey, may I ask if Bailey's still here or not? But if someone could, Diane, if you could let Bailey know this needs to get posted tomorrow on our county website? Thank you. Mr. Lake, you are next.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Lake, consider contract renewal with Eagle Accounts Group.
Yeah, I have my expert Barry McDonald's on there from 4D. Basically, the contract, and I think it's been signed, the last one was signed by Dr. Cora, so the commissioners have to sign it, so as a courtesy, because we can't, it's sent to me, and 4D wanted me to sign it, and I said, "No, we got to go to the commissioners to have your approval, because it's a contract that the, you know, so."
Mr. Freeman, have you looked at the?
I have, and again, as Mr. Lake indicates, you're the only contracting entity for all of the county departments, and so it's appropriate to go ahead and renew this on the terms.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract renewal with Eagle Accounts for the Prosecutor's Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Barry, you did a great job.
Thank you, John.
That was a true compliment, Mr. McDonald. All right, next on the agenda, we have consider agreement between Porter Township School Corporation and the Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Commissioners. Come before you, we had contact with the Porter County Sheriff's Office. They're in a position where they don't have enough school resource officers. A person needs to be certified. To do that, we actually have one of our deputies that resides in Porter County. He's an alum of the Porter Township School Corporation, specifically Boone Grove, and they've asked in a pinch if perhaps he could be a school resource officer, serving that capacity maybe one, two at the most days per month. Won't affect his work schedule, and the Porter Township School Corporation will be paying this hour, isn't any benefits associated with that. I think it's a win-win.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between Porter Township School Corporation and the Sheriff's Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Next on the agenda, we have Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sure.
First, I'd like to give my thanks for moving forward the Michigan City Bridge Project, and it's my, it's my hope next year that first, rather than waiting toward fourth quarter next year, first quarter, we can start addressing the next year's work and the following season's work for the bridge. It's my, if I have any input on the agenda next year, we will be addressing that first quarter of next year to work on a full-term solution for the Michigan City Bridge. The next item, I'd like to cover it briefly, talked earlier about the Orca grant and the money we'll be receiving from that. One of the things that I'm still hopeful for is that we can, that we can save the La Port County Courthouse. I've spoken about the courthouse numerous times here, these past two years. It's getting in pretty bad shape, especially in the basement. We have standing waters in areas. You look at the walls, foundations. I'm not an engineer, but you see crumbling, crumbling concrete bricks, walls. It is, it is rough down there. We have servers that are up on ledges, IT servers that are sitting up on ledges, you go down there. And for our employees who have to work on these servers, there are plastic buckets that they stand in, so they're not standing in the water when they're manipulating and working on our servers. This is, I mean, aside from obviously, and obvious blatant OSHA violation there, it, our courthouse needs help badly, and I will, I will continue to push forward to hopefully get some resolution there so we can, we can save our courthouse. The last thing I want to do is see our La Porte courthouse gutted like the Michigan City courthouse was. There's so much history there. We need to save what we can in areas where it's not necessarily needed to save, you know, the 1960s-style, 50, 60-style bathrooms that were remodeled and updated. There's no reason to save a historical 1960s bathroom, because that isn't historical, it's already been, it's already been taken out. So we can modernize those and put in some ADHA and different compliant ADA bathrooms. There's a lot of good stuff coming up here in La Porte County. We have, it's spooky season, so Halloween is upon us. We have events from La Porte County Museum, Saturday, the 29th, from 2 to 4, there'll be a free event out there. You can go trick-or-treating and check out the museum. The, our animal shelter is doing a trunk-or-treat the day before that, on Friday, the 28th, from 5 to 7. And there are also numerous events at local community organizations around the county, including the YMCA is going to be doing some, some really fun stuff with pumpkins in the pool, apparently. The bridge, and I don't want to harp on the bridge, but the more I, the more we look at the bridge, the more we look at what's happening, the importance to not just Michigan City, but La Porte County as a whole. I really feel like we do a disservice by waiting till the end of the year like this. Last year, last year I sent six messages over the span of seven months, from February to July, asking for the bridge to be, for the bridge to be addressed, and it wasn't till the end of the year. And this year, here, we've waited again, you know, we're in October now. It's my hope that we'll be able to move forward with that, and I don't know. I look forward to a hopeful and more brighter future here in La Porte County. For everyone else, you have to believe in the future, you have to believe in yourselves, you have to believe in doing the right thing. And I think now, more than ever, one of my favorite quotes from Sir Edmund Burke is my favorite quotes from Sir Edmund, Edmund Burke, is that "The only way for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." And I think that applies equally to everyone, if you see something wrong, you should stand up, you should speak against it, and realize there are people here that will stand behind you and support you, and have your back, and not let you down. With that, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rosensky?
Yeah, Larry kind of stole my thunder a little bit on the Roaring Prairie EMS base, I was out there again this morning, about once a week I like to get out there, uh, we're so close to having electric, and then we had these storms, and it pulled the IONAM away from us, but, they've, uh, made a commitment, they're, they're gonna get there soon, once the electric is in, as we've been saying, it'll be a rush to the finish then. Uh, I was invited to a meeting of the healthy communities, remember we had a presentation from them here, our last meeting, and, uh, they had a presentation about the smoke-free air policy conversation, they showed us how tobacco and vape advertisement is aimed at youth, um, they had a lot of statistics there to back that up, it's pretty amazing, it was pretty frightening, actually, and, uh, there are more meetings that, uh, are planned with the healthy communities, which I plan to attend. Uh, as we mentioned, the presentation there, the brief presentation there from Tony about the broadband, uh, meeting we had out at PNW, absolutely amazing, we're really making great progress. And I mentioned earlier that I had gone down to, uh, Kingsberry Creek and to, uh, Meadowview Subdivision, I am very confident now that this, that we've done the right thing, it's gonna be, this project is gonna be what we need, we all want the same thing, we want everybody to be safe. And, uh, I was at a, an event last week, happened to see an old friend of mine, Jim Hollifield, a lot of you may remember Jimmy Hollifield, he was Superintendent of Schools at New Prairie, he is now the, uh, Chief Financial Officer for Valparaiso Community Schools, big job. I just happened to ask him, "How's Brother Mike?", he's got a twin brother, Mike, a lot of you didn't, maybe didn't know that, last time I saw Mike, he's a naval officer, he was on his way to, to, uh, being deployed to Italy, he's back, he's now a captain in the, in the Navy, he is the Chief Judge of Navy and Marine Corps Court of Criminal Appeals in DC, it's a big thing. These are local guys, I, I'm very lucky and, and honored to know them both, uh, and that have really excelled, and really, uh, are, are proud, make Lepore County proud to know them. They also have Brother Steve, I don't know what happened to him, but, I've been on the Mayor's Veterans Committee for twenty-two years, uh, this year, our Mayor's Veterans Committee will have our thirty-fifth annual Veterans Day program, ten-thirty on Veterans Day, we all know when that is, eleventh hour, the eleventh day of the eleventh month, at ten-thirty at the Civic, and for the past few years, it's been my duty to get our main speaker, I've had Joe Donley, I've had Todd Young, I had Jackie Walorski last year, this year our speaker, uh, old friend of mine from a long way back, Todd Ruketa, I knew him when he was a congressman, visited his office in DC, and he is now the, uh, the Indiana State Attorney General, we've regular conversations with him, interesting conversations, bring him up to speed on some of the events going on in Lepore County. And then the very next day, November twelfth, we're gonna have a dedication of our display at the museum at two o'clock in the afternoon, uh, I was fortunate enough to represent the county, myself and Mr. Presswell, uh, a couple years ago, for the dedication of the USS Indiana attack submarine at Port Canaveral. Also, the next year was the dedication of the attack ship, uh, USS Indianapolis, for both of those, the county had made us a good donation, and we are what they call plank owner, and a plank owner, for those who wouldn't know, back in the old days when they made ships out of wood, if you were on the original crew, uh, you were, were called a plank owner, if they ever tore up the plank, you would get a piece of that wood from the plank, they're made of metal now, but you still get a nice piece of wood that donates, that dedicates to Lepore County as being a plank owner, so I have that, I have a really nice big picture of both the, of those vessels, and also the book that came with them, about the, the crew, and, uh, like I said, I got to meet the crew and, and the captains and everything, so we're going to, they made a very nice little display out there for these objects, and we're going to dedicate that on the next day, November twelfth, at two in the afternoon, and, uh, Joe mentioned the courthouse, yeah, it is bad shape, so was Michigan City, that's why they chose to do Michigan City first, we have to pay it off before we can jump into a project like Lepore, uh, and also that has to be done through historic, uh, people who do historic restoration, uh, because of its age. And, one other thing that's come up, uh, these things get out and, and they get all distorted, and, uh, people start telling, I'm not gonna say they lied, just tell their own version of things, uh, we have complained in this room about the PA system for a long time, and I finally sit down with Darlene, I said, "That, we gotta fix it, period." And we called Rolling Sound, come in, they put in a couple new amplifiers, they put in some new speakers, they put in these things, and I was in this room when they mentioned to me that the judges had asked, "Could we get a shut-off, a, a kill switch for the microphone out there?", because sometimes they have people that get a little excited, um, sometimes it gets feeding back, and they got no way to stop it, and I said, "Yeah, sounds okay to me." So, I, I took the initiative, said, "Yeah, go ahead." To my knowledge, we've never used them, ever. So, uh, nobody is, nobody is, is denying people the right to speak, it was a, it was a, an, an equipment function, asked for by the judges, and okay by myself, that we've never, ever used, so, let's just, uh, stop all the inflated exaggerations about that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'd like to start my comments out with our Lepore County Works program, uh, we had a, um, Ms. Daisy was here, uh, earlier for her award, but we're highlighting her company, Absolute Industrial Safety LLC, so the point of our program is to make sure that we know the, um, companies that have dug their roots in deeply into Lepore County, and to make sure that anyone who's looking for their first job, a, a good job with training, or a better job, knows that they don't have to go far, they can find really great jobs in Lepore County. All of these companies are posted on our website, um, under Lepore County Works, so you can, um, and also, we also have all of our county jobs listed, so if you click on "Working in Lepore County", you'll see all of the county jobs listed, and how to apply, and the links to the application, and then on the right-hand side will be Lepore County Works and all of the links to the, uh, private companies and their open positions. So, Absolute Industrial is located on State Road, uh, thirty-nine in Lepore, the company has been in business since nineteen ninety-four, a supplier of various safety products, they provide customers with necessary items to operate manufacturing and industrial safely and effectively. Uh, there, you heard tonight that their biggest accomplishment over the last couple of years is that they were a key partner with, uh, the, the state of Indiana during, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic, they, um, assisted companies across the Midwest and actually across the country in acquiring the appropriate PPE they needed to keep their businesses running and keep their employees safe. The business is a hundred percent women-owned and operated, they, uh, have some strong values that they are centered on, honesty and integrity being the two, uh, core values, uh, they offer a complete line of, um, products from office supplies, furniture, technology, software, equipment, food service equipment, janitorial and sanitation products, industrial, power tools, safety equipment, and all, all the way to school supplies. They have six people with an average wage of eighteen to twenty dollars, to learn more about them, uh, you can check out their website, it will be posted in the morning, and, um, there's also a phone number that you can call, uh, that will be posted as well, so, um, I was really glad that the owner was able to come with us tonight, because, um, she's proof that, um, you can, you can, uh, do a job for a long time, and just when you think you're ready to coast, uh, the pandemic showed up, and she had, uh, she had a, a very challenging couple of years there, so, we wanted to give her, um, some, some high praise for that. Um, I also wanted to make sure that the, uh, community is aware that our website, we, we, we continue to tweak it, um, uh, the, the Farm Bureau Speed Test will be up there, and, um, and our own speed test, so that we can continue to get good data for our broadband grant, grant, um, operation, and making sure that our grants are accurate, um, the mobile early voting ban, uh, schedule is on there, and then, you know, to the points that were made earlier, um, the, the, uh, the, um, statements that my colleague has made about me on Facebook have been really distressing, and, um, I have not installed a mute button, Mr. Haney said that Sheila Matias put those mute buttons in at thousands of dollars of cost to taxpayers, I promise you, I didn't do that, I, I see that there's three buttons over here that say MC, mute, PPD, something, and it has some numbers on it, I don't, I've never been trained to use them, and I have never used them, um, but, in fact, our IT director responded to Mr. Haney's post, and said, "Commissioner Haney, the Facebook post below was brought to my attention, and I'm respectfully requesting that you remove it, as it is simply not true that the Commission President, quote, 'put those mute buttons in', end of quote. The mute buttons were installed as part of a much-needed overhaul of the sound system, recommended by my department and the vendor we're working with that was fully funded by the county council. The improved sound systems help members of the public, not only in the meeting room, but those that are watching on Zoom or on Alco. As you know, the Commissioners are not the only group that uses that room, but other boards and even judges sometimes convene court there. The buttons were put in to allow any host to mute any one of the microphones to reduce feedback, not, not to gag or silence any speakers. I didn't seek consent or approval from any Commissioners before the vendor and I ordered the new equipment, including the mute buttons. The only direction I got from the Commission was, quote, 'fix the sound system and make it better', end of quote." So I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the record, because I, I, I know politics, sometimes people bend the truth, but, um, we're, um, lying is not, not nice, and, um, it's not really, it shouldn't really be part of the, uh, public discourse, so with that, good evening, thank you.